We good, we green?
Yeah, I think it's green.
Okay. Welcome, everybody, if you can hear us, to the Town Hall for, it's now November 2016. I'm Yor, the producer for Ragnarok 2, and this is?
CM Dragonlark. I am a guest CM, because I'm the CM for Dragon's Dogma Rose.
And so, we're gonna go over a couple announcements first, stuff's going on, and then we'll dive right into your questions. And then, at the end of it, we'll ask the chat if they have any questions that they want to ask us. So, hold off your questions for now until we do that, so that we can see them when that time comes. Because we have a few questions this time. As far as announcements go, for those of you playing Ragnarok 2 right now, we still have the Halloween events for a couple more weeks. Even though it's no longer Halloween, we usually run these things for about six weeks to give people time to get their goodies and stuff in. We also have our Fall Sharing event that we're doing, that's been running for a couple of weeks already. If you go and check out the website, you can see the details for that. If you share or do all sorts of things with it, you unlock entries to the whole event, and then everybody in the game gets goodies. They get more EXP events and possibly other stuff that we're working on, so check that out. And then, next week, we will be coming out with our November Holiday Event Winter Nights. For anybody that's seen the Viking Costume Set, that's what that's from. So, that should be rolling out next week, as well as November Happy Hour boxes. I know a lot of people were asking about those. We waited till November 7th, because sometimes we cycle them every four weeks, and then there's certain months that are longer than others, and you end up with November Happy Hour box going in October, and so we waited a week, and so it's going in next week. That's basically what's going on right now. There's a couple other things that'll be in the patch next week, but I think we're gonna hold off on letting you guys know what that's gonna be until Monday. And then, I think we're just gonna dive right into the questions.
Alright, so, here is our first question. This is from Eppely. Any plans for Christmas events? Any plans for events next year?
Yeah, so the Christmas event that we always run is called the Yule Festival Endgame. There's a Santa Claus character, there's a bunch of Noels dressed up as his elves. And so, that'll be going in, in early December, and probably running for about six weeks. Events for next year, we still have the same holiday ones that we had before, but there's a couple of months where we didn't really have holiday stuff. We do have some stuff planned for those months that we're gonna try and work on and roll out. I think the person who asked this question is saying that they have errors?
What kind of errors are you experiencing? Here, let's move this over here, and I'll check out. Nope, it seems to be... It seems to be...
Working?
Working, so is it like errors? What kind of errors are you experiencing? Like, are you having trouble hearing us, or?
They probably won't be able to answer us if that's the case.
That's true, that's true.
Unless we can sign to them.
Well, we can, we can, we can write to them, the chat. And there's not the delay with the chat, as with...
Oh, it's cutting in and out.
If you're having issues with Twitch, you might try with YouTube or vice versa.
Yeah, we're live on both right now.
YouTube tends to, sometimes the quality's a little lower with what you're seeing, but you can usually, it's less laggy, and sometimes, it's less, it doesn't cut out as much as Twitch does. So, that's why we have both options, just in case Twitch is being special.
Okay, so we'll just continue to the next one, and then see if she has that issue. You can make a support ticket, no, don't make a support ticket.
Oh, gosh. This is another one by Eppely. When will PVE monsters be nerfed in terms of brutality?
Yeah, so this is something that we kinda have on our to-do list for a while, as part of balancing all those areas and fixing a lot of master level areas that are too hard. We're trying to find that, that special area where we can adjust the monsters so that when a player's leveling, they don't have, need a group to kill them, but then it's not, doesn't become too easy. And because it's not a flat percentage decrease across the board, it's gonna be specific per monster, per zone. And then, we're gonna be focusing kinda on the critical areas first. Dark Whisper, I think, is probably the worst of them. And it's, it's a lot of figuring out the numbers and how we can decrease, and what exactly we're decreasing. HP, standard damage, abilities, like all that kinda stuff. When, a lot of the stuff, we're trying to get out before the new year. Our focus was to get a more balanced RO2 by the time 2017 rolls out, so that when we roll out new PVE stuff and PvP stuff, we're not throwing stuff at the players in just a mess of imbalance and craziness. So, that's still our goal, and yeah, we're gonna try to do that last, last couple of months here.
I like the word they use, brutality. It makes me think they're getting kinda like Requiem-esque, and like, some of them are just going completely rogue.
A lot of the results just rip the players' heads off. Yeah.
Alright. Next question?
Sure, yeah.
Who do you trust least to make an omelet? This is also by Eppely.
Chickens.
Chickens, that makes sense. Or any other?
Actually wrote that down, chickens.
So, you'd remember? Alright. Any plans to help warriors and knights to change their runes for strength-agility runes? Are there, and this is by Kirk Cott.
Kirk Cott, yeah, he has a lot, or he or she asked a lot of questions on the forum. We don't have any plans to change out the runes. I think the question is, based on some balance changes that went in recently, that warriors and knights that may be stacked in runes now find them less attractive than they were before. No plans to swap any out, yeah.
Are there plans to put a cap on stats?
So, that's a topic we've discussed, because we're looking at different stats right now, and stat squishing, and specific stats, like PvP stats and stuff, and the idea of a hard cap was brought up. I think we prefer addressing the stats themselves and the formulas and that kinda stuff, than actually setting a hard cap for them. One example is with the PvP runes. Some of our volunteers came up with an idea of how to change how that stat works, so it's no longer a percentage, which is something like we did with the seed runes, but is sort of a flat rate, and then the rate, you get a bunch of stats, and then, if you keep stacking them, you'll get sort of diminishing returns on how much you actually get from that stat. I think that's better than a hard cap. I don't know, we're, I mean, I'm not saying that we'd never do a hard cap, but I think we prefer addressing the stat and the formula over just hardcapping it. We'll see.
Alright. Next question?
Yep.
Is there any Zeny Sync event coming soon, as a XX event?
So, I wrote down, we don't have an event, but we're considering how we can Zenify any future stuff. We add as, and more sync incentives. And then, I wrote about how Zeny Sync events don't really address the problem of inflation, because the people that are super wealthy aren't gonna spend themselves into the poorhouse. The people that are poor either are not gonna spend Zeny on stuff because they can't afford it, or they might and still remain poor. So, it doesn't really, you know, on a scale of people with Zeny, it doesn't make it even, it just sort of, you know, it stays the same. But adding more stuff, or upgrading stuff, and tweaking the Zeny values required for it, do contribute. One example of that is the Dungeon Wings that we put in. It was a new item that was never there before. We're selling it for 250 rupees, which isn't a lot for people. But, we're finding that a lot of people will buy like stacks of these items. So, they're spending tons of Zeny for these items to get themselves out of the dungeon, which is an item that didn't exist before. Stuff like that, where it's not gonna ding the average player a whole lot, but over the entire game. Like, it does suck a lot of Zeny out of the game, and then just keep adding those little things. But something big and an event in your face, we've seen in the past, doesn't really work the way that it's, it's supposed to.
So, more small, consumable Zeny items?
Like that, or like, we're thinking of updates to systems, or new systems that we could like put a little, you know, Zeny tax on, or something.
Zeny tax, Zenify the tax. Are there any plans to remove the CLS attack-defense runes on costumes? This is by Chikitu.
So, they're talking about the Swag and Kaffir costume sets, which are the new five-piece costume sets. The team before us put these purple rune holes in them, which can take the bind runes, the regular runes, and the CLS PvP runes. It's different from our normal cosmetic stuff, because that only takes the regular runes. So, it's sort of caused an issue where players who want to have the best stats only can get the Swag or the Kaffir set, because that's the one that's gonna get you the best rune holes. So, that's an issue we're looking at right now. I talked about how we wanna address the CLS PvP rune stats. But we've also been discussing possibly changing the purple rune holes, and refunding any runes that are in those sockets back to the player that wouldn't otherwise fit. But then, also, the issue with that is people have spent their time, there's Zeny, their diamonds, on acquiring these items for the purpose that they are the most valuable, and then, you're kind of, you know, getting rid of that whole effort, just by doing that. However, though, I do think it is a balance issue. So, somebody else asked if, oh, the next question, sorry, is any plans to make normal costumes take the plus 80 stat runes? Somebody, somebody also asked, I don't think any of these questions, but sometime this week, about adding that to the regular costumes that have the regular rune holes, if changing those to purple rune holes. That would be a giant undertaking as well, and we would kinda have to see what sort of game we would be making at that point, and how we can address balance. If we're fixing the runes, and we're doing certain things that don't affect PvP negatively, and don't make, doesn't make PVE crazy easy, yeah, we can consider it, but... We're working on it right now. There is a certain path we're taking right now. We do know that we're not gonna be removing purple rune holes right now, because of the issue of people spending their time, and there's Zeny in their diamonds on, on getting them, so it's being worked on. So, yes, there are plans, but there aren't any, nothing's in stone yet.
Alright. Are there any plans to make union costumes tradable? And this is by Yukio Zero.
No plans to make them tradable. We have some ideas to update unions and add to it in the next, in 2017. We can look at it. I don't know if I agree with all cosmetic items should be tradable. So, we're gonna have to see if that makes sense, and why we would do that, so, I don't know.
No spoilers. Are there any plans to make PvP maps less laggy?
Yes, we are, along with the balance that we wanna do, we want to sort of roll out some changes for PvP at the same time, and following up with it. There's a lot of stuff that's gonna be sort of map-specific to reduce lag. We're looking at ways that we can restrict siege weaponry on the WO map, because we know that a lot of people will just dump incomplete siege weaponry around, because it's basically like a frame rate barrier for people. Then, there's a lot of backend stuff that we're looking at, and how the client communicates with the server that we can help and fix, and maybe make the game less laggy about, so. It's a constant thing. You'll, you'll see specific changes, like that siege weapon one, and then, you won't see other ones that we might put in patch notes, but you may not understand what's exactly happening on the backend, but yeah, definitely, there's plans.
When will the Niflheim update be?
It'll be in 2017. We saw what we had from the team before us, and it's not halfway there yet. So, there's still a lot of stuff that we wanna do. We're able to see maps and things like that, but there's a lot of work on new monsters and all that kinda stuff that would take a while to flesh out and update. If it was mostly finished, which is what our hope was, we could've rolled it out sooner, but it doesn't, it looks like it's maybe halfway there. The good thing about that is it allows us to apply possibly different design, or more stuff, or whatever, to it that maybe wasn't planned before. We don't know, we don't really know what the full extent of it was gonna be. We just kinda know what we found in some basic stuff that they sent us, so, 2017.
Are there any new suffix titles coming this Christmas patch, or will the same old titles come back? This is by Arganissa.
It's gonna be the same titles right now. I don't think we'll be able to update the holiday stuff until, until starting next year, because we're working on a lot of the balance stuff and PvP stuff right now.
Is it possible to make it snow in Prontara, Alberta? A Christmas-themed map would be nice.
Yeah, like, what is the RO1, is it Loody? Is it like a Christmas map, I think, I don't know. Weather effects would be very cool. It would, it would not be anything that was prioritized over like balance and stuff, but maybe when we find some, some space in the schedule next year, we can look into something like that. Maybe seeing how some of our other games might do it, if they do it, that kinda stuff.
How do you feel about the current RO2 game engine? And this is by Raikum.
It works. I mean, obviously, it could be better, but it's not the worst one out there. The, the next question is, is there any plan to optimize it so we can get better FPS? I think I answered that, that, one of those last questions, that yeah, we're, we're looking at certain things, like how, you know, gameplay things, how they work, as well as how the, the game and the server communicate with each other, and try and improve that. But yeah, it, it's, yeah, it's not the best, it's not the worst. I don't know what to say about it.
Will the union system be revisited in the future? And this is by Large.
Yeah, so, I mentioned earlier that we have ideas for adding to it and updating it next year. There's gonna, it'll, it'll come before Niflheim and stuff, and I thought it was a cool system that sort of happened, and then never got any love after that, so, yeah, we'll be looking into that.
Any plans for a Colosseum revival?
Yes, so, we're looking at the PvP systems, all three, WO, Jayhun, and Colosseum. Colosseum probably get the first amount of attention, we'll see. Colosseum seems to be the strongest, although the boxes are outdated, so we need new boxes. And then, we're also thinking of an idea with moving it from free-for-all to team-based, where the teams would be randomly assigned, so people can stack their teams. The reason for this would be to kinda give more of a chance to classes that have support abilities that aren't like directly DPS, so if you're a healer, you can do Colosseum and not feel like you're gonna be destroyed. We're still kinda fleshing out how that would work, and how we would want it to work, and that kinda stuff, as well as how it would tie in with new PvP items, and the other PvP systems, but yeah. I, I think we'd probably get new boxes before any of those changes, though, because those boxes are from 2013, and I don't think they've been updated since level 50, so they need some updates.
Is the honing system going to be changed?
We probably, eventually. It's not one of the first systems that have like a bunch of issues with it. I mean, there is a lot of issues that I personally have with it. I think it's mostly because my, I don't have a lot of luck with it. But we'll probably look at how we can make that better, because it's very, it's a very complicated system, not only for the players when they're trying to learn it, like a new player, but it's also very complicated design-wise. So, we'll probably want to, when we get some time in the schedule next year, look at taking it apart and making it better. I mean, our whole idea with a lot of the stuff that we're doing right now, with like card refinement and fusion, is how do we make it more approachable to the player and less of a headache? So, that's what we'll probably look at. Thanks, Mira.
Could honing scrub items come from a Kaffir in the future?
Like a Zeny thing? I don't know. I mean, we can look at ways that we can make items available. I don't know if they would be for Zeny, or be for something else. Maybe diamonds, maybe something like that, we'll see.
Are there any plans to make changes to RNG rates, seed rule rates, refinement for plus 10, and card refinements?
Yeah, all of it, actually. We're working on right now. With the seed rune rates, that's probably gonna come before the card refinement. We're just kinda trying, finding the Goldilocks zone for those new ratios, and trying to figure out how easy we want certain ones to be grabbed. A lot of the seed rune rates are really, really bad, so it would, it would be a headache to use right now. So, we're trying to find a better, better drop rates, I guess, for those. For the card refinement, it's gonna be better rates. I think we're trying to borrow equipment rates, the equipment refinement rates, to try and mimic card refinement. But with that, we also need to address stat issues with those cards, because if then, everybody has a plus nine card, then everyone's gonna be destroying each other in PvP, or what have you. So, we're looking at that as well. We're also looking at adding a couple new items to that system to make card refinement easier and less of a headache, so that refining cards is actually something that people feel like they can do, and not be a waste of resources.
Yes, nice use of the term Goldilocks zone. Making golden cards epic plus is a very big hassle to anyone who didn't stockpile anniversary cards, since only Anubis set and Osiris cards are farmable.
Yeah, we can, we can look at other ways we can make these cards available. It's gonna be, we're not just gonna push them out there, because they're supposed to be sort of rare. But I do see the issue with people, they were only available during, I think, that one anniversary event. It was a couple of years ago. So, we'll see what we can do about adding those things into the game elsewhere.
Which direction are you going to take with costumes with the advent of gradable Swag costumes? The costume market is dead, as Swag allows plus 80 runes and CLS runes. I would really like us to be able to wear our normal costumes that we enjoy looking at, and be at the same page, be on the same page as those with Swag.
So, I talked about this earlier with another question. Yeah, there's an issue right now where people just want the Swag and the Kaffir costumes. Mostly Swag, because I, I don't know, I think it's because of the look, and it looks cooler than Kaffir. But, because of the rune holes, and all the other cosmetic items that only had the regular rune holes aren't as sought after. We're looking at it now. Right now, we're gonna, we're working on addressing certain issues with the runes that can be put in those, specifically those PvP runes, because you can now put them in, is it 15? Possible, up to 15 new rune holes? I can't remember. That you couldn't before, and nothing was really changed about how PvP works, or how those runes work. So, it's just like, oh, you can have a lot more PvP attack power, a lot more PvP defense than you could before, and then that was it. So, we don't know what we're gonna do right now. We are discussing if we do walk down, changing those purple rune holes to regular rune holes, and refunding all the runes in there that can't go inside regular rune holes to the players. Well, the issue is, is then, the players that spent all their time, there's Zeny in their diamonds on getting these items, feel like that was a waste. If we take all the cosmetic items, and we change them to purple rune holes first, how would we do that? Because that's thousands of items, that's thousands of, well, actually, hundreds of thousands of actual items, with thousands of, you know, unique items, mushroom hats, or whatever. And what would that mean to those issues we're trying to address with PvP? Now, if we, now, if we address the stats, the formulas, and the PvP runes, and all that kinda stuff, maybe it doesn't matter if we do that. I don't know, we're trying to figure that out right now. So, it is being looked at, though.
Question regarding daily quest lockout times. Lockout from zero to six makes sense when this was NA server, but now that this is an international server, the lockout is unfair to some time zones. And this is a question by Max Sesho.
Oh, I think they used to be VEP years ago, when we had that program, or I'm just completely blanking. Yeah, we can look at this. I actually didn't even come to, I don't know if I've ever discussed this with anybody before now, but yeah, we'll look into it. We didn't, it just hasn't been on our radar, I guess. But I know that once we, once we added a lot more regions to the game, and a lot more regions merged into our version, we made changes like we did with the WO surveys and those times and stuff. So, we can look into this and see how it works, and see what sort of manipulation it'll allow us to do, and then go from there.
Can all daily quest lockout times be changed to five to six, or zero to one, or otherwise reduced to no more than an hour or two? That would be more fair for players of varying scheduled time zones.
We can look, I mean, I don't know right now, but we can look into it, and yeah, I think that reducing would be better, so, we'll see what we can do.
Three quick questions. How do you become a GM?
You apply, and you, I think it usually helps if you have any kinda like customer support service experience. And you also have to work in the office. I know a lot of people wanna be GMs from home, but that's not allowed. I've never been a GM, too, so I'm just, that's, this is what I'm assuming, but that's what I think.
Customer service experience, and...
If you get yelled at a lot by random strangers, that might also qualify.
Lots of patience, so much patience. Can you lower prices on Kaffir shop items?
Can I? Yes, we have. We've done it with the Diamond Boxes, we did it recently with the Mount stuff. I think we're looking at the VIP, the elite membership packs next. Depends on which items you're talking about, and yeah, we don't just kind of cut prices. There's a bit of investigation and research into what prices make sense, and all that kinda stuff. The idea is lowering prices makes it available to more people, which in turn benefits us, obviously, but also benefits the community, because there's a market of people that exchanges Zeny for Kaffir points. And when you only, when you have really high prices, and you only have like a few people buying items, then those people control those KP rate, KP rates that they call in game, which is Kaffir points to Zeny. And so, they can crank them up really, really high, but if when you have, you know, when you lower prices, and it makes sense, and more people can buy the items, then the KP rate becomes competitive, and then the people that would never, you know, pay into the Kaffir shop and still have Zeny benefit more, because more items become available to them. So, we look at this by looking at sales data, not only of normal items, but you know, when we put items on sale, and all that kinda stuff, and seeing who's buying when, and what, and what quantity, and all that kinda stuff, so. Certain items jump out, like the diamonds and the mounts that needed help. And so, we know also the VIP packs are very popular, so we're gonna look at that next. And also, new items, so we're also thinking of new items when we come out with that. So, it depends on what item you're talking about, but yeah.
Can you make an event to give gold or diamonds to new players?
New players? We can look at like the experience for new players, and what we can do to benefit that, like adding diamonds to that leveling box or something. We have to make sure that it's, it can't be something that's can be exploitable by players, because we, you know, we don't really limit, you can have multiple accounts, and we don't want players just to make new accounts to farm that Zeny, and trade the boxes, or what have you. So, we'll have to look at it. Also, the gold Zeny thing, I don't know. If it's an issue with new players, we can look at it, but it's obvious that, you know, RO2 has an inflation issue. It's not as bad as some other games that I've been in, but it's still something that we're trying to fight right now. So, in the same sense that we don't want it to be exploitable by all players to get diamonds, we don't want them to just have an easy way to farm Zeny, and then everything is a million Zeny to buy on the market, so.
And those questions were by Flinch Ragnar. How many Japanese people play Japan? Can I access the RO2 registration page? But we can play RO2, this is by Hiyo.
A few. It's definitely not one of our bigger regions, but we do have, big enough, I mean, I don't know what to compare it to, but we do, we do have Japanese players that register and play. If you're having an issue registering, I would say make a support ticket, because I did talk with somebody recently that was dealing with a ticket, somebody saying that they couldn't register from Japan. uh, I did talk with somebody recently that was dealing with, uh, a ticket, somebody saying that they couldn't register from Japan uh, that we're working on, but we looked it up in, in registrations and logins, or they're both coming from that country, so. Uh, I would say make a support ticket at support dot world portal dot com and, uh, one of our GMs can help you out with figuring out what is happening there and fix it for you.
Will you add flying caffra to fly the maps from Morocco beyond? Is this by Clonchi?
Um, we do have an idea to add more flying cafres to the Dirt Desert map, so we're trying to figure out how to do that. Um, beyond, we, uh, we would have to consider it. I'm not sure which map you would be talking about and which areas, but if you have ideas, send them to us, so we'll look at it.
And I think that's the last one we have on here, but I think there are a couple more that, here.
Um, okay, yeah, I think I wrote it down somewhere scrolling. Um, so we had a last minute question submitted from Arblist, uh, and the first question is, what is your favorite type of bear and why is it RB? Um, my answer is, um, I guess it would be Winnie the Pooh, because when I was a kid, like an infant or a toddler, I had a Winnie the Pooh stuffed animal thing that I always slept with and never wanted to be a part of. Um, so that's the closest bear I've ever been to. Do you have a favorite bear?
Uh, I had like a little, uh, panda bear. Actually, it was, yeah, I had a little panda bear that I got from, um, Panda Express when I was little that the dog ate when I was like ten or something, but until then, it was my favorite.
And then I think Eden said gummy bears on here, so gummy bears is her answer.
That's a good answer.
She's in the chat, she's not on here, but, uh, the second question from RB is, will you name your children after me? And I said, I don't think my children will be bears, and, uh, Eden put a comment here that said, with that beard, they might be. That's not right. Um, and the last question is, what is something you would want for the game that is simply not compatible with the way RO2 is built and set up? And I wrote an answer, um, uh, my answer was, uh, something that would not be possible would be to time travel back and be part of the design that was there in the very beginning. Uh, because it's, it's, a lot of our trouble that we have right now is trying to figure out why this was set up a certain way and how it was set up a certain way, uh, three years down the line after there's been multiple kind of hands on it. Um, and I think that it would allow us to, uh, avoid some mistakes, uh, as well as, uh, sort of help direct or understand how things work. Um, but that's not a possibility because, uh, time travel is not a thing yet, so.
One day when we all have a TARDIS.
Yes, I'll take a DeLorean, I mean, I don't, anything. Uh, okay, I think that was the last question written on the thing, so, uh, we're gonna open up questions for people in the chat. If you have a question, just write it in the chat and we will try and answer, uh, as they pop up.
I think people ask questions like earlier.
Oh, did they?
It might be hard to.
If you asked a question earlier, just type it again in the chat.
Yeah. Cause every time someone types something, it like goes back down, so us trying to scroll back through it will be very difficult to do.
Oh, there are new forum questions?
We can check out the forums, too.
There's six more questions on the thread? Did everybody submit their question right as we went live? Uh, any plans to give Noel's equality in terms of amount of options for transmogrification?
Whoa.
What happened? Oh, there's a lot of questions now.
Yes.
Um, we, I mean, we'd have to look at it. I think the transmog restrictions are based on armor type now, although I think we rolled out something recently that, that, um, eased up in that restriction, so, um, we'd have to look at it. There's nothing being planned or worked on right now, so if you have more details, send me a PM on the, on the forum.
Uh, uh, Christine zero three zero six said, are you gonna lower the number of seals required to get CLS attack?
Uh, no plans right now, but we are looking at all the PvP stuff, so, um, uh, maybe. Uh, we're gonna see what all those rewards are, what needs to be added to, what needs to be changed, um, no plans to reduce right now, though.
Do you guys have a plan of making a complete and official database about monsters, items, quests? It would be good for newbies.
Not official, but we are working with, uh, a player to um, run a database site and trying to help him with that in between trying to juggle on the other stuff that we're doing. Um, because we know that that sort of thing is, is very valuable to, to a game like Karo Two, so, uh, not a, we, we wouldn't necessarily be running it, but we would be assisting with it.
Uh, when will you lower monster damage in, uh, DWL, so?
Yeah, Darkwing, dark, or not Darkwing, Dark Whisper, yeah, no, Darkwing, duck, it's Darkwing. Uh, Dark Whisper, forgot to pay on the Jwaii maps, um. It, we wanna track aim for, by the end of the year, um, we're gonna see, because it's not a straight, like, there's no s- there's no toggle to just lower everything, so we're gonna have to figure it out, um, yeah.
Uh, gold cards aside from the ones in, uh, Aussie and Jwaii are really hard to obtain. Can you please make more gold cards available for farming?
Uh, yeah, somebody asked this earlier and, uh, we'll, we'll look at it, cause, um, we know they're super rare, but they're really rare and so rare that you can't ac- like acquire them, so we're gonna look at that. Was somebody like attacking the building?
I don't know. Anytime someone says like that, I look towards that open hole of the ceiling, just in case, uh. I hope not. Um, can we have a deadly roller coaster style flying caffra in Jwaii that pays you if you survive the whole flight?
Like a roller coaster that has a, a chance to kill you?
That seems to be the.
A roller coaster with RO2's original RNG, so most of the time you're gonna die.
It'll be like one of those things where you kind of fall through the world, like a roller coaster that goes through the world, and so like you might fall.
There was a time in RO2 years ago where there was a map corruption issue and our GMs were just like on the prowl for people, talking in public chat, like, I'm falling through the map, and they would warp over and warp the person up. But sometimes when you'd warp over, you'd end up down there with them or you'd crash. It was a mess, yeah.
Good times. There's pandas? I didn't know there were pandas in RO2.
Yes, they protect the K lady. I can't remember her name now, um, they're, they look like, like two, I'm remembering them as wearing like little uniforms or something, uh, but they're on either side of her up, uh, on the cliff, um. Nerf the pandas, so we're gonna look at all the, all the monsters. The pandas might get nerfed too.
Also, if you make more of them and then make them weaker.
Actually, there's a quest, um, from a, from an NPC on the bridge named Hadingus, uh, to go get panda meat for him. And Hadingus was actually, uh, when the Norseiga Nyor would go down and visit people, he would, uh, disguise as Hadingus. And I don't know if anybody has gotten that, but it's been in the game for like two years.
That was a game secret you guys just heard. No one has discovered this. Um, can you lower the mobs and boss stats with HP in Wonderland Hard Dungeon? Because everywhere you're only wants to use Knight Warrior, SM, Cress and Priest, another class is RIP.
We can look at the dungeons right now. I mean, the big focus is gonna be the zones, because, uh, we wanna make it easier for people to level and not have to be in groups. And then, uh, beyond that, we can look at the dungeon difficulty as well, um, but, uh, first focus probably gonna be those zones um, that are, uh, we see a lot of drop off on or people stalling at because of, uh, they don't have friends. No, that's terrible. They don't have people to level with.
Uh, what are the main focuses of patches in the coming two months? Will we see more class balanced nerfs and buffs, item changes?
Uh, both, yeah, so it's gonna be buffs, PvP changes, uh, system updates and changes like card refinement and fusion and stuff that we can roll out, um, sort of a lot of prepping, um, to game to accept a lot of new stuff coming in twenty seventeen, uh, so that we can fix, that we know, uh, stuff that's having a problem. Bug fixes is the first thing, uh, it's still ongoing, uh, and then balanced stuff happening, so.
Uh, what are you gonna do about Zeni inflation? You need one million to, up to buy three S costumes and three million up to de- for decorative accessories.
Uh, we're gonna take all the Zeni from the players and evenly distribute it amongst everybody. Uh, we're not doing that. Um, uh, I mentioned earlier, we're gonna, uh, introduce sort of Zeni things throughout the game when we update stuff or add new stuff in. An example of that was the dungeon wings that people are buying and like hundreds of thousands of Zeni are going out of the game every day, um. So, um, stuff like that that we put in where it's not in your face, this is a Zeni sync, because the people that have a lot of Zeni aren't gonna buy into that, but stuff that would be like everyday stuff that you would want to use or, or systems that you wanna use that uh, takes a little bit of Zeni, but if you take a little bit from everybody for every, for all those things, then we can slowly drain out that stuff.
Uh, will you compensate the people who need to change build with RR and scrubs such as warriors and canines since there is a one K in cap?
Uh, I think it's just like the question before about somebody asking if we're going to swap in runes with, uh, strength runes. Uh, we don't have any plans right now to do that, so.
Uh, raise and cap?
Sorry, Eden is my father's name. Uh, yeah, Kushinata. I should know that, because, uh, I think I was the one that relayed that name change to it before it hit the live. Like, I think we had to rename a lot of the stuff in Forgotten Pan, but it all mashes together up here after a while.
Can we have panda pets?
More pets would be cool. I'm not gonna say whether we're gonna have panda pets or not, but I think more pets would be very cool.
I am also rooting for panda pets. Uh, want to sell my friendship.
Are you scrolling or is that the chat scrolling?
I'm scrolling, because we're not at the bottom yet. I just, we stopped for questions, so.
Okay, wow, that's a lot.
Um. Well, uh. Uh, so are there any more questions? Do we miss any questions?
Any questions?
Any questions, like the?
I think most people are on Twitch, uh, probably because, so, how many of you, uh, saw the stream because of the crazy amount of retweets from the, uh, Fall Sharing event that, uh, we saw, because, uh, I think I came in Monday and I was like, why do I have three hundred retweets on my account right now? It's like, what broke? And then it just continued throughout the week, cause people are using it to do entries for the Fall Sharing event.
It's such a relief, but it's like a good thing. Oh, nothing broke.
Well, I'm kind of afraid that like, somebody's in there like, my account doesn't work, and he just like, it just, he's buried by all the, all the people that are, this is how like I picture tweets, by the way. I think they're just talking amongst themselves now.
Yes. I know we did, we did miss some good conversation going over questions. At one point, there was ice puns. There was a lot of ice puns that I remember seeing, um, but yeah, I don't.
What is it? We have a new bot?
Oh, so Mubot is, is telling us that extra life is still going on, which it is until the end of the year.
Oh.
So, um, if you guys haven't donated and want to donate, you still can, just follow the link, uh, to help donate to the children of uh, Hurley's Children's Hospital in Flint, Michigan, is where all the proceeds are going to. The last I checked, which to be fair was a while ago, we had like four thousand four hundred dollars in donations. It was amazing, like, amazing. You guys are all amazing, so.
Uh, Arblist's question is, what were you two dressed as for Halloween? Did you dress up for Halloween?
I did dress up as, for Halloween. I.
Oh, you were on stream?
I was on stream.
Yeah.
I dressed up as a, um, a witch. I dressed up as a target witch. It was like what the suppliers at Target believe a witch should look like, so I was like, you know, the makeup pack, it's like, witch, and it's like, I didn't really think this was well, but okay, and then a hat. How about you?
Uh, I didn't dress up for Halloween, but I did go to a Halloween party the weekend before, the weekend before Halloween. And, uh, one of my brothers and I went as, uh, Marty McFly and Doc Brown.
Oh, fantastic.
I was Doc Brown with a white beard, so people thought I was like, people were saying I looked like a homeless Doc Brown, like I just found Doc Brown's stuff in the trash and put it on. And then I saw the photos later, I'm like, okay, that makes sense, I can see that.
So that's why your preferred time machine is a DeLorean?
Yes.
Instead of the correct answer, which is TARDIS. Um, someone asked, can you add the reward for Himelma's coin? I missed it. Himelma's coin quest, the current one is very sad.
Um, so we can, we can update that, yeah, uh, we, we'll have to figure out what we wanna do with it, uh, Himelma's came out, did it come out before Forgotten Pan? I think maybe it came out right before Forgotten Pan? Was it between Avant Val Kri and Forgotten Pan? I don't know. I need, this is why I write stuff down now, um, but yeah, we'll be looking at all that kind of stuff, um, seeing what we can make incentives wise for the, um, for those old areas.
What if you could farm scrubs or monster drops as a rare drop in FP and Jwaii? Could you keep people buying mass scrubs from Embassy and get Uber gear in the moment, but provide us a way to get them?
Uh, that, that, if we do something like that, there would probably some, like, that would be something that we would wanna do. I don't know how I said that sentence. Um, uh, yeah, we don't wanna make something too easy to get, especially with those scrubs, um, even though there's something that are very valuable, we want it to be worth something, um, so the people that would devote time to it could get them or, you know, turn around and put them in the market or stuff like that, so. Uh, I don't know, we have to look into it and see.
Someone had asked, um, why wasn't there a New York's bonfire for Halloween?
Um, I was doing maintenance that day, so it was all a maintenance day.
That's true, cause you missed the live stream. You didn't get to be scared.
We had a lot of, uh, even though to the players, it wasn't a big patch, it was a lot of updates and stuff on the backend that we were doing. So I was supposed to be on the Halloween livestream, but, uh, if I was, then the maintenance, you guys wouldn't be able to play RO2 for another hour or two.
That's a fair reason not to be part of, and really, I think that everyone, most people who came in to participate in the Five Nights at Freddy's livestream sat down, got scared and like ran away, like literally got up and ran.
I could hear screaming from, from my desk.
It was, um, why is pronouncing Eden so difficult? Can I buy a name change?
Um, so we didn't write the, the, the cards at the very beginning, but whoever did write them actually misspelled your name. I don't know if it was on purpose, but put an E at the end, because we frequently, uh, say Idun or, yeah, like Idun, it's supposed to be.
Say Edun.
Eden, Edun?
It's Eden, right? Eden?
I didn't, I don't know.
Like it's Eden, but it's Eden.
I don't know, I don't.
There are so many ways to say it, that's why your name is so magical.
Yeah, we didn't give you the name too, so can't blame it on us.
I definitely had nothing to do with it.
I find a lot of enjoyment from people trying to pronounce my name, so.
I just like, I go with like the, the way that they say Mjolnir in, um,
That's how you're supposed to.
Which I, well, they say in the Thor movie that one girl says Mjumiu, so I just assume it's Mjumiu is I, it's how you say it.
Mjumiu?
Mjumiu, Mjumiu, I guess, is how it was.
Yeah, there, there was a guild a while ago that could never pronounce my name right, and it somehow went from Nyor to, they would call me DiGiorno.
DiGiorno, that's close. That's, I can see that.
So I was DiGiorno.
Nyororor, yeah, that's how it gets like when you say Nyor, 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 Nyor.
Yeah, most, a lot of people send me NYO, and I'm like, oh, like, is that me? Okay, yeah, there we go. I do have a bunch, when I test stuff and I have to make characters, I just do an NJ or, 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 nor, uh, Norios. Somebody once sent us Nori, Norios. It was like homemade, uh, cookies.
DiGiorno.
I didn't eat them because I think the GMs ate them, but it's usually safe to let the GMs have the first bite of stuff that people send us in the mail.
I'm sure they'd be really happy to hear, that's why they're, they're sharing the gifts that come in with them.
You gotta wait like five minutes and watch them, see if like they get a little sleepy or something.
Yeah.
So is there any more questions?
Yeah, any more questions? Any more non-name related questions? Is Phantom Pyramid System with Grand Prize based on percentage or just luck?
Um, each level has its own chance at luck. So it's not when you start the system, you only have this small fraction to get to the very top. Each new level you get, you basically start with a new level of luck, which is kind of cool, because then if you get to a high level, you're not using up your luck. I don't know, I'm just trying to say this right now, but like, uh, it's not like you start at the very beginning and the very top one has like a two percent chance of getting there. It's every new level has its, uh, chance for those items, so, um. I don't know if I explained that at all well, but, yeah.
So it is RNG, it's just like different every level, so it's not like a overall.
So if you get to a certain level, you can kind of like sigh of relief, I guess, I don't know.
So you have just as much chance to get from like the second to the last, to the, the last level, as you would get from the very bottom to like the next one? Uh, can we update the Solo Dungeon Loki cubes to be better?
Uh, we can look at them, people hate mysterious crystals. Uh, yeah, we can look at them, uh, we. If you have any ideas of what you would like in those boxes, we can consider it, we can look at it, there's a lot of different box stuff like that that we're looking at, we're trying to figure out. What can we add in these areas, but then also like, we can't add diamonds in every box that drops, cause then. Everyone has diamonds and they have everything that they want, so, um, we're trying to figure out what we can do to make certain things. Like valuable, like I'm gonna go here, I can farm more diamonds here and all that kind of stuff.
Um, somebody had asked Team Pouring or Team Lunatic?
Well. I'm gonna say Lunatic. No, I don't know, I'm undecided, I did have a hand in writing the quests, actually I did write the quest for in Forgotten Pan. Where there's the crazy porn pouring fanatic that has you kill all those other creatures, cause he's afraid that they're gonna take attention away from pourings.
That's fantastic, I'm gonna say Lunatic is my favorite because. I spent so many hours killing them attempting to get the pet until I got it, and it was like the first pet I got, cause. They were so cute, I needed, it was, I got the, one of the bunnies.
Yeah.
Yeah, Lunatic's right, yes, okay.
Pourings are made from Odin's sweat.
I read that, I was like, eh.
Like, sometimes I get confused, I'm like Odin's tears, I'm like, wait, no, I don't think he's crying, pouring, so it's weird. What's your favorite bug that's happened in R2? Oh, there's been so many, um, there was one a couple of years ago after a maintenance, we came back up and. Um, we got word from players that um, when they go into the uh, Prontera Fortress map for Whoa. Uh, they were falling under the map, and so we warped over there and we were like. What's happening? And it was like, everything was like, you know, you know when like a certain, when you know your graphics card may be dying and like, stuff is everywhere and there's weird stuff. Uh, it was like that. And so we were like, oh, okay, uh, we were able to warp to top of one of the mountains in that area, like an area that players can get to. And we realized that one of the pieces of hay at one of the farms. Somebody must have accidentally added like a couple zeros to the end of some modifier or something, and it was the size of the map. So it wasn't that people were falling under the map, but when you entered into Prontera Fortress, you were inside a giant piece of hay the size of the map. Which, once we figured it out, was a fairly easy fix, but for a half hour to an hour. Uh, gravity and us and everything was just like, what's going on? Like, how did the map break? But we were able to, to flip it around and have a quick emergency maintenance and save everybody from, uh, I think we called it the Giant Hay Gods.
Yeah.
Back then, that we anchored.
Truly terrifying.
Uh, any R1 monster you'd like to see in R2 that isn't already in, uh, Fioni?
Which one's Fioni?
The MVP pink thing?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
Oh, that's scary looking. It has teeth, right, like, yeah.
Hodes in R2 might be dicey.
Yeah, I know. Um, I like the little, um, what are the ones that you can summon if you're the, the alchemist can summon? Um, there's like, they're not. There's like these monsters alchemists can summon, and I like the little fairy one, like, I wanna see that everywhere in the world, like in real life.
I was surprised when we got Stormy Night in R2, it's frightening in, in 3D.
Fioni looks scary though, like they're agreeing with you, Fioni, I don't know.
Yeah, 3D version of that would be.
Too many teeth.
We did actually have a, uh, idea for MVP system that was written like in twenty thirteen, so. One of them was gonna be Edgar, um, we're actually looking at like, oh, how can we update this and still have it, because I think it would be a cool system to have in R2. And not wildly different from other stuff that we had, so, that'd be cool.
Also, yeah, her name was Lift, the little fairy I'm talking about, I think is Lift.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if that's a question?
The grizzly and ymir form stacking, which would you prefer to show, the grizzly model or the leaf model? I think ymir form takes, oh my god, what is?
I mean.
Is that like a concept for a 3D version of Fioni? What is that?
Terrifying, whatever that is, it's so scary, I'm so concerned, I.
Safe search on. Well, we were surprised by Edgar, cause Edgar in R1 was sort of a pudgy, like he smoked a, a pipe type thing.
Oh, yeah.
In between R1 and R2, he'd just been like lifting the whole time.
Worked out, yeah. Alright, any more questions? Any more?
No, there's gonna be like, they're gonna go to the forums and be like, Nyor said we're getting Fioni.
Uh, and it's gonna be on the internet after this is over for them to go back and verify it.
Oh, it might be from the mobile game.
Can you make more designs for Maces? See, the text is so scary.
Even, even when that's supposed to be like cute looking, that's frightening.
It's not, it's, it's, you know, it reminds me of the game I played, um, during uh, Spook Portal with the giant monsters that followed the girl, and she was. It's Yam- Yamawari, I think, which is Night Alone, you're this little girl and you're running around, you're trying to find your like sister who abandoned you and. Your dog who got hit by a car and just, everything is awful and that, there are monsters that look like that and I don't like it.
Uh, I feel like avenues to just balance changes are great, actives are a better way to get our ideas to you, for example, Beastmaster Class Forum hasn't had a post in eight months. We're talking about that right now, um, because we have like a post up for our blob, which is the bug report, um, one. We're also trying to see where, what, where would be a good place to organize discussion on that. Um, it might be just a redo of the forum and setting it up and promoting that, um, pushing it saying like, hey, we redid the forum. Put your ideas here, and we'll look at it, um, when there's too many areas to put feedback, often it's. People are, won't post, or they'll see stuff and they'll be like, oh, there's no activity here, I'm not gonna post here, um, so we might look into that, and we're also trying to see. How we can better share some ideas that, that we're working on, or maybe the VCRs are discussing with the community, uh, we've run into issues with that with, um. Some players that are part of VCR program being kinda harassed by players, cause they find out like, oh, you suggested this, even though it's like just an idea that they suggested that. Hasn't even made it to our eyes, and so, you know, we're also filtered, and obviously, nothing that they come up with ever makes it into the game without being filtered through, so. That's also the issue, um, so we're trying to figure that out right now, you guys have any ideas or suggestions or preferences on how to share that, uh, let us know. Post it in the community chat forum, um, or PMS or what have you.
Andy, this is definitely last call for questions, like two minutes until.
You won't have another chance for a month? I think.
This is the first livestream every month is?
But it's usually the end of the month, but I think we delayed it because of stuff that was going on last, last week, or this, this Spook Portal stuff. VCR mobs to kill in their free time, well, personally, I know that they are very fun to kill.
I mean.
Alright, we'll give it till, we'll give it another minute and we'll see.
Cause I have one more minute, one more minute, it's what happens, it's like the minutes will go up and there's when you just listen like twenty questions.
Yeah. Trying to think of other bugs that were fun, oh, the first day that we released honing, there was an overflow issue. Uh, where if you so- got honing to a certain level. Your stats would go crazy, so, um, somebody had like. Uh, vitality up to a certain point and their HP kept growing and growing to like the billions, and then it hit a certain level and they would insta die. And then another person had like really, really strong attacks and all that kind of stuff, uh, we had, that was the only time we had, actually had to do a rollback. Because we're like, everything's exploding.
I like the one where they, the mouse started spinning, like randomly spinning.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's like a Benny Hill song video on YouTube of it, yeah. Epley says, can I design a load of event for next year? Yes, I don't know what a load of event, or does she mean loads of events? Uh, yeah, um, if you have ideas for that kind of stuff, we can, we can look at it and see where it fits and in the schedule, all that kind of stuff.
Uh, they know, spinning pekko's, pekko surfing, alright, well, it is, it is six o'clock, so.
Okay, uh, thank you everybody for attending, uh, for those of you that didn't attend or are watching this later. Submit your questions and show up if you wanna participate and ask your questions, um, we will have this probably again. Either at the end of November or early December, uh, we'll make announcements of it and we'll get the question thread up again. And yeah, thanks for showing up.